Good morning all. We're going to give it a few more minutes in case folks are still joining either online or in person and then we'll get started. Good morning. Thank you for attending today's rulemaking hearing regarding state board rules governing individual education accounts, innovative school districts, graduation requirements, and special education. Today is July 24th, 2025, and it is 10:02 a.m. And I will now call this rulemaking hearing to order. My name is Rachel Soupe. As the general counsel for the State Board of Education and their designated representative, I will preside over today's hearing. I will begin with a summary of each proposed rule revision. The first item is the Individual Education Accounts Rule 0520-01-11.02. The Individual Education Accounts Program is a school choice program for eligible students with qualifying disabilities. Section 21 of Chapter 235 of the Public Acts of 2025 amended Tennessee Code Annotated 49101402 by adding deafness as a qualifying disability for the IEA program. This item ensures the list of qualifying disabilities in the rule is aligned to statute. The next item is the Innovative School Districts Rule 0520-01-25. Chapter 1053 of the Public Acts of 2024, now codified at TCA 49-8-1501 at SEC, established a new type of local education agency called an innovative school district. This item establishes a process by which universities may apply to operate their training schools through an innovative school district. The third item on the agenda today is Academic and Instructional Requirements Rule 0520-01-03.06 Regarding Graduation Requirements. Currently, Tennessee Code Annotated 49-6-1010B and this rule require that a high school student pursuing a traditional high school diploma receive at least one credit of computer science education. To align the traditional high school diploma requirements and the alternate academic diploma requirements, this item clarifies that a high school student pursuing an alternate academic diploma must also receive at least one credit of computer science education in high school, though the course may be modified based on a student's individual needs. This item also updates the all-state musical organizations to all-state art organizations to recognize that additional art disciplines may count towards state graduation distinction. Please note that this item does not propose any changes to the world language graduation requirements. If in the future the state board votes to change the world language requirements, a rulemaking hearing will occur at that time to solicit public feedback before the board takes a final vote on any decision to amend the world language requirements. The last item on today's agenda is Special Education Rule 0520-01-09.24 relating to functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans. The proposed rule revisions clarify that while state and federal law encourage educating students with disabilities alongside their non-disabled peers, an IEP team may determine that a student requires a more restrictive environment if the student engages in a pattern of behavior that places himself or others at risk of harm or injury. This revision clarifies that the FBA and BIP may be done in the more restrictive environment. Information on how to join today's rulemaking hearing in person and electronically was included in the rulemaking hearing notice filed with the Secretary of State's office and posted on the state board's website. Online attendees should keep themselves muted unless asked to unmute. This will minimize any audio feedback and ensure that speakers can be heard. If anyone is attending in person, I will also ask that you remain quiet when not speaking so that the online attendees can hear and be heard. Any attempts to disrupt the hearing will result in removal from the hearing either electronically or online or in person. Any attempts to disrupt the hearing will result in removal. A redline version of the rules under consideration at this hearing are available both here in person and online. The hearing will be recorded and public comments regarding the proposed revisions will be provided to the state board members for their review. Please note that rulemaking hearings are an opportunity for the state board to collect feedback on the proposed rule revisions to inform future revisions and is not a question and answer session. During the public comment portion of this hearing, please state your name and organizational affiliation, if any, before making your comment. Each person who wishes to speak will be allotted three minutes, after which time you will be asked to conclude your remarks. If everyone here in person has signed up for public comment, I will begin comment with in-person speakers. Since this meeting is also taking place electronically, when the in-person speakers are done, I will ask any electronic attendees who wish to be recognized to provide a public comment to unmute themselves and state their names. Once I have collected all names, I will call on attendees by name to make their statement. Please remember to keep yourself muted while not speaking to ensure that all comments can be properly heard. I'm going to start by reading off the list of in-person speakers to make sure that I have everyone. The following folks I have signed up to give an in-person comment. Gibson Keith, Roxanna McConan, I said, I believe it says, or McComman, Matthew Harrison, Emma Hatcher, Michaela Webb, and Helder Monte Wheel. Have I forgotten anyone in the room who wishes to speak in person? Okay. And if there is anyone online who wishes to speak, if you could, please come off mute one at a time and announce your name. We will jot down your name on the list of speakers and get to you as soon as the in-person comments are through. So if anyone is online, please go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your name if you would like to give a public comment. All right, I will begin by calling up our in-person speakers. When I call your name, please come up to the podium. You'll turn on the button with the little person to activate your microphone. So our first commenter is Gibson Keith.
Good morning. My name is Gibson Keith, and I'm here to comment on the Academic and Instructional Graduation Requirements Rule. I'm with TWLTA, the Tennessee World Language Teachers Association. I am the advocacy committee chair. I'm here today to speak on behalf of Tennessee students, families, educators, communities, and who understand the immense and lifelong value of world language learning. Let me be clear, retaining the two-credit world language graduation requirement is not just about curriculum. It's about ensuring our students that are equipped for the world that they are entering. This requirement is not a burden, it is an opportunity. I urge you to preserve it. Why world languages matter? College readiness. Many colleges and universities, public and private, require at least two years of the same world language for admission. Removing this requirement would disadvantage students who aspire to pursue higher education but may not know what their future holds when they make course selections in high school. Number two, academic and cognitive benefits. Research shows that students who study a second language outperform their monolingual peers on standardized tests, especially in reading and math. World language learning enhances problem solving, critical thinking, memory, and focus. These are not soft benefits, they are the very foundation of academic excellence. Number three, career readiness and workforce demand. Several members from our business community have pointed out that Tennessee is operating in a global economy, desiring to develop more economic and strategic relationships around the world. A multilingual workforce helps Tennessee and the United States to engage more effectively in global markets and diplomacy. It strengthens national competitiveness and supports international opportunities. It improves communication, especially in certain fields like healthcare, where interpreter services create massive expenses. For individual students, earning potential is increased. Bilingual workers can earn up to 20% more than their monolingual peers. Career doors are opened. Bilingual professionals are in high demand across industries such as healthcare, tech, law enforcement, and international business. Number four, cultural awareness and global citizenship. Today, world language classrooms go far beyond grammar drills. They are vibrant spaces of cultural exchange, helping students build empathy, appreciation for diversity, and a broader worldview. In Tennessee, a state where growing linguistic and cultural diversity, these skills are more essential now than ever. Here in Nashville, we are proud to have one elementary school with a language immersion program. My daughter attends this school, and I have seen firsthand, as a parent, educator, and educator, how effective and engaging attending a bilingual school is for students. This August, three more schools will begin their transition to language immersion. This momentum should be matched with statewide support. In closing, let me add, in the words of philosopher Roger Bacon, "Knowledge of language is the doorway to wisdom." I respectfully urge this board to keep the doorway open for Tennessee students by retaining the two-year world language credit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Roxanna McComman. Apologies if I pronounced your last name incorrectly.
You're fine, it works. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about Board Policy 0520-01-03.06. My name is Roxanna McComman, and I serve as a world language content specialist here in Tennessee. I come before you with a deep respect for the work and the difficult decisions that you're tasked with making. I would like to speak to the importance of maintaining world languages as a graduation requirement in our state. Throughout my career, I've had the privilege of supporting language education across Tennessee. I've served as the world language supervisor for Memphis Shelby County Schools and now support efforts in Nashville to expand school choice opportunities and improve access to quality instruction. I've also chaired the Tennessee World Language Standards Revision Committee, served on the board of the Tennessee World Language Educators Association, and have built strong partnerships between language education and the business community, collaborating with the Tennessee International Business Commission, the state and national chambers of commerce. And from my experience, the connection between world language education and economic opportunity is clear. According to the National Chamber of Commerce, more than 14,000 jobs in Tennessee require proficiency in languages such as Spanish, Arabic, Japanese, and Chinese, and over 200,000 prefer language proficiency in those languages. This figure likely underestimates the true demand, as in many other jobs benefit from multilingual skills. Removing world languages from the graduation requirement could place our students at a disadvantage not only within Tennessee, but also in the nation and global job markets. I understand that the board must weigh many considerations. Still, I am concerned that this change could potentially unintentionally deepen disparities across our districts. While some communities may have the resources to continue offering world languages, others, especially in rural communities, may not. Limiting students' access to college and career pathways. Our shared goal should be to expand opportunities for all students, not narrow them. I also respectfully encourage greater transparency around the decision-making process. It is unclear who has been involved in recent discussions, and I worry that key voices, including district-level world language leaders, may not be represented. Tennessee has a number of experienced language specialists who have worked us on alongside the Department of Education on various initiatives, including a broader range of perspectives, can only strengthen the outcome. I would be honored to contribute to this process directly by serving on the committee or in any capacity that would support a well-informed and inclusive discussion. Please feel free to reach out. I would love the opportunity to help share insight and collaborate in the service of Tennessee students. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to education in our state.
Thank you so much. Matthew Harrison.
Good morning. My name is Matthew Harrison, and I'm a Spanish teacher at Sullivan East High School and adjunct faculty member at various universities throughout East Tennessee. As an experienced educator, a two-time Sullivan County Teacher of the Year, and a doctoral student in educational leadership, I'm here today in response to the policy shift proposed by Chairman Eby at the May 30th meeting regarding removing world language as a high school graduation requirement. This change would have devastating consequences for our world language programs, staffing, and most importantly, our students' global readiness and overall intellectual development. Although the 2526 rule on graduation requirements as proposed still includes two world language credits, the mere suggestion of removing this requirement could dismantle years of progress, setting Tennessee students at a significant disadvantage compared to their peers nationwide. In my near decade as a world language teacher, I've been astonished by our students' achievements. First, in regard to college readiness. After Spanish IV, our students earn up to 12 hours of college credit and four Epsos at no cost. They begin college well ahead, often fulfilling language requirements before their first day on campus, or immediately pursuing language majors or minors. Second, in regard to real-world immersion. Our Spanish IV students are able to participate in a study abroad program, immersing themselves in another culture and using their language skills daily. As a rural, poverty-stricken school, these trips are made possible by extensive community fundraising fostering lifelong connections. Lastly, in regards to career opportunities, students are using their language skills to enhance their careers. From a student at O'Reilly Auto Parts earning an extra $5 per hour for conversing with Spanish-speaking clients, to flight attendants at Delta making an additional $20,000 per year for their Spanish fluency, language directly translates to economic advantage. We have students working as chefs in French restaurants in Charlotte, North Carolina, thanks to discovering their love of culinary arts and language in high school. Beyond these direct applications, the enduring benefits of language learning are profoundly cognitive and developmental. Language learning enhances critical thinking, problem-solving skills, and creativity. It strengthens communications, fosters empathy, builds cultural awareness, and promotes global understanding. These are fundamental skills that benefit students in all academic disciplines and future endeavors, from STEM fields to the arts. I firmly believe that not every student needs to go to college, and not every student will use a world language professionally. However, our classes teach far more than just grammar and vocabulary. We teach English, reading, writing, history, geography, communications, and cultural understanding, skills vital for any path a student may choose. I implore this body to preserve world language as a graduation requirement in Tennessee. This is not merely about maintaining existing programs, it's about safeguarding the intellectual development and the future readiness of every Tennessee student. Removing this requirement closes doors for our students before they even know these opportunities exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Emma Hatcher.
Good morning. My name is Emma Hatcher, and I am a student at East Tennessee State University. I just returned from studying abroad in Mexico, something I never thought a girl from rural Appalachia could do. It only happened because of one specific policy, Tennessee's foreign language requirement. I want to speak with you with honesty and respect, but I won't sugarcoat this. The proposal to eliminate that requirement is not just misguided, it's an absolute mistake. I understand the desire to simplify graduation paths or reduce perceived barriers, but we're not just talking about a class. We're talking about cutting off an entire avenue of opportunity, especially for students who don't know what's possible until someone dares them to try. I was one of those students. I didn't want to take a language, I didn't think it mattered, but because it was required, I did, and everything in my life changed. That single class led me to scholarships that cover my entire college career. It gave me a purpose. I'm pursuing dual degrees. I even gave a TED Talk. I've studied abroad, and I found my calling, serving Appalachian and Hispanic communities through language, education, and human connection. If that requirement hadn't existed, I wouldn't be standing here today. We talk a lot about preparing students for the real world. Let's be clear, the real world is global. Bilingualism isn't a luxury anymore, it's a necessity. It's a job skill, a bridge, a tool for empathy. It helps us save lives, teach minds, grow businesses, and understand people unlike ourselves. So I ask you this with honesty. Is the world becoming less connected? Are we moving toward less understanding of one another? Absolutely not. Yet, this proposal tells students, especially those from under-resourced communities like mine, that global literacy isn't worth their time, that expanding their worldview isn't important, that the bar should be lowered for them. That's not equity, that's erasure. Foreign language is not a hurdle for graduates, it is a ladder for opportunity. I ask you to not be the people to pull away that ladder. Thank you for your time and for considering what this decision really means, not just for policy, but for people, for futures, for the kind of Tennessee we want to build. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michaela Webb.
Good morning. My name is Michaela Webb, and I am a junior at East Tennessee State University. I'm here today to speak against the removal of world language as a high school graduation requirement. I want to give you the personal perspective of a recent graduate who wouldn't know where she'd be without foreign language. Ironically, I didn't always feel this way. I was convinced I'd be a nurse, certain that foreign language had nothing to do with my future. I remember sitting on my grandmother's porch before sophomore year venting about how pointless Spanish class felt. I wanted health classes, not grammar and vocabulary. But five years later, I'm standing here because of that very class. I decided to continue Spanish beyond the requirement mainly to test out of college credits. But not only did I graduate with 12 hours, but my entire future changed. I found myself so drawn to the language that I chose to delay graduation just to keep my Spanish career going. People thought I was ridiculous, but I didn't care. I'd found something that mattered to me. And surprisingly, it made me a better student in science. Spanish, like medicine, is rooted in Latin. While my peers studied hard to memorize terms, I was making connections. I didn't expect it, but language helped me succeed across the board. Research supports what I experienced. Language learning strengthens cognitive flexibility, memory, attention, and executive functioning. It even protects brain health long-term. But beyond academics, language gave me something more powerful, empathy and belonging. When Spanish-speaking families joined my church, I was able to welcome them. We connected, and a few months later, they became members. I am known by name at the local restaurants, and I was able to lead my parents around small towns in Mexico where English is not common. I have studied abroad in Costa Rica, the Dominican Republic, and I'm preparing to spend six months in Spain at one of the top 3% universities in the world. I have met so many amazing people and have connections in every corner of the world. Language helped me build community, and that has changed my life. Foreign language isn't just a subject, it's a bridge to opportunity, to understanding, and to a more inclusive world. It has led me to people, careers, and a future I have never imagined. It is not just me, but hundreds of others have similar experiences. Removing this requirement would be locking a door that took decades to open. It is to close a door that many students, like me, don't even know they need opened. In a world that demands global competence, we cannot afford to fall further behind. Please do not take this opportunity away from future students. We need more bridges, not barriers. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, in person, we have Helder Monte Wheel. Again, apologies if there were any pronunciation issues.
Bonjour, buenos dias, and good morning. My name is Helder Monet Weil. I am an MMPS teacher with over 15 years' experience in the classroom. When I tell people that I teach Spanish, I often get a big smile and some version of the following statement, "Oh, I wish I'd taken Spanish in high school," followed by a lengthy description of how speaking Spanish would help them in their job or their personal life. I wonder how many other teachers of other foreign languages get a similar response. The thing about a well-rounded K-12 education is that so much of what you learn doesn't show its value until much later. I should add, though, that many of my students, even the most skeptical, come up to me in the weeks following the beginning of class and tell me with delight that they were able to use their Spanish to speak with some coworkers or people in the community. Because I understand the importance of knowing another language, I've insisted that my own children, Soren and Josephine, also be bilingual. And in fact, I've even dragged them to this hearing despite the fact that it's the last few days of their precious summer break. I've done that so that they understand also the importance of learning a foreign language. Chairman Eby, I hope you get the opportunity to use your German soon. I hope you continue to guarantee that the students of Tennessee have the same opportunity as you did. Dankeschön.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person who wishes to provide a comment who has not yet had the opportunity to do so? All right. I will now switch to our online attendees. Currently, we have one person signed up, Charles Cooper. If you would like to come off of mute and give your comment, you may go right ahead.
Great. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Good morning. I am very grateful to the members of the board for holding this meeting and to everyone present for your admirable support of education. I speak today solely as a private citizen, but my professional life is of some relevance to the topic at hand. I am a professor of medieval Latin and Greek residing in Knoxville, so I can say with considerable pride that I've dedicated my life to teaching foreign languages in this state. I also have the daily privilege of working with great Tennessee students who have recently completed their K-12 education. In my limited time, I cannot describe in detail, or even in broad terms, the profound lifelong impact that the study of foreign languages has on students, how it cultivates our greatest and most human skill of communication, how it introduces students to culture and art, how it deepens one's understanding and practice of religion, and how it is essential for a variety of civil goods like national security and international commerce. Instead, I will make two short points. First, I want to voice my agreement with a comment made during the last quarterly meeting that sustained development of durable skills like communication, critical thinking, and collaboration is critically important for students in the rapidly changing world of technology and the workforce. But there are few subjects more in line with this noble goal than foreign languages. Neurological studies have consistently demonstrated that learning a second language at any age physically changes our brains, and for the better. It improves concentration, it strengthens the memory, it fosters communication and creative problem solving. This is what we want for Tennessee students, now and always, to learn how to think clearly, articulately, and intelligently. Second, I want to make an appeal as an educator myself, and I must say that I find the timeline for this proposal concerning. 12 months from initial presentation to statewide implementation is very fast for such a consequential decision. So, at this important juncture of forming a committee, I urge the board to gather as much evidence as you can. Visit classrooms, talk to students, interview teachers, consult business leaders, and speak to professionals of all ages and occupations. I would also suggest inviting experts to give testimony and answer questions publicly. This would include K-12 and university language teachers, as well as other experts in education, cognitive science, and relevant fields. My fear is that moving too quickly on this issue could significantly disadvantage future generations of students. Such a change would also be difficult to correct once lost. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else online who would like to give a public comment? Do we have anyone else online who would like to give a public comment? If so, please feel free to unmute yourself and announce your name, or type your name into the chat. I'll give everyone one minute to do that. All right, seeing as we have no other signups, I want to make a few final reminders. You may submit written comments regarding the proposed revisions using the contact information on the agenda, on our website, and on the screen. The email address to submit comments is sbe ruledmaking-public comments at tn.gov. Comments must be received by Tuesday, July 29th at 9:00 a.m. Central Time to be considered. Email comments are advised as regular mail is running slowly and may not arrive to our office on time. The board plans to vote on final reading of these rules at its quarterly meeting August 15th, 2025. Specific details about that meeting agenda and how to attend, online or in person, will be posted on the state board's website under the meetings page. If the board approves these changes on final reading, they will be sent to the Attorney General's Office for a review, published with the Secretary of State for 90 days, and go before the Joint Government Operations Committee of the Tennessee House and Senate. The State Board of Education appreciates everyone who took their time out of their day to attend today's hearing. In particular, I want to thank any educators and students and advocates who are here, and remind everyone that student need is at the center of every decision that the board makes, and I know I speak on behalf of the board when I say that. So thank you again for taking the time to come down here and weigh in. And with no further business on the agenda, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.